Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports on any executive sessions?
Yes, there was. As per Section 708A, two of Sunshine Act, an executive session was held on Thursday, January 11, 2024, at 11:00 a.m., which related to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
The people can join through the Zoom that was posted on the website previously. Public comment?
I'm in the divert north Manhattan township. I just want to say, I think most people who show up for these meetings, also any of their local municipality meetings, school board, et cetera, those people have the best interest of their fellow citizens, taxpayers, et cetera, at heart.
You get their feedback.
Oh, am I too close?
Wow.
It's still doing it, yeah. I don't know what to do.
All right, you have your three minutes to go.
Okay, okay. So whether it has to do with the Jane Doe lawsuit and the 32-page consent decree that the county is required to abide by, could be the farmland preservation, $200,000 that's on the agenda today, increased spending for farmland preservation, could be Mr. Stankovich coming here week after week after week to talk about the plight of the veterans in the county, when it almost seems we have an absent Veterans Affairs Director in Brenda Zekman, not exactly sure what she's doing in her position, but there are at least five different state-funded Veterans Affairs programs that I can guarantee you, most veterans groups in this county are not aware of, that they could be taking advantage of. So what is she doing to try to inform the veterans and different groups in this county of programs that are out there that they could take advantage of? We also have the problem with the bio-solids in the West End and NSP, Tully Environmental. What's being done out there, it's my understanding, that project is still not finished. So where do we stand on that? Is any pressure being placed on our state legislators, state representatives, state senator, et cetera, regarding that project? There are many issues going on in this county, and when folks like me show up during public comment to have their measly three minutes to get some sort of awareness or accountability out there, I don't see that as being problematic. People may not agree with the message that I have to send or the questions that I have to ask, but it's absolutely my right to do so. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
George Stankovich, Palo Alto. I just want to say one thing, I see that the sheriff's not here today because he has to fend out front. So that's why you don't have any police force here or here today. There's got to be something done about our police force. He's saying that he doesn't have any people or anything like that. I think that that should be one of the number-one priorities. Our safety is more important right now, especially the things that are going on in this world. Now, thank you for mentioning me. Senior citizens and veterans, once again, I'm going to bring it up. Thank you for bringing it up about the veterans. I think it's a shame that there's a person in there. I know that person needs that job, but how about the people that need their benefits that aren't getting it? If this is a problem, I think we should look into it and take care of it. Senior citizens, now look at this weather. I know I've seen at least 20 people carrying blankets and stuff, and what they do is find a cozy corner and sleep there for the night. How would you like to go out there and sleep during the night? You get freeze to death, but did, what was our local and state and federal government? That's their problem. That's their problem. I think it's time, we are human beings, God created all men equal. We say to Pledge of Allegiance, let's start doing this, taking care of people. That's what matters first. First, not buildings, bridges you're putting over in Scoop, our St. Clair, cost of three, four million dollars. This is ridiculous. Put that money to good use. I'm all for preserving old buildings and stuff, but that's not, I'm more worried about preserving people's lives. That's what's important. That is what has to be known, number-one issue. Everything else is secondary, everything. I got a township over there, they didn't even know I lived up on this street where I live to last year. The rural manager said I didn't even know this street existed. Now there you go. My wife and I used to be, I have to go down backwards in our car, or our vehicle to get down there. This is ridiculous. It's time to wake these people up, and it's time to get on the ball. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Jeff Dunkley, Palo Alto. I'll try to police myself since you can't throw me out. First off, $200,000 for the farmland preservation. I'd like to know if Boots' farm or family is getting any of that money, or if he's not. Wow, you're quick to answer when you're not in the chair, man. That's great. Or if they're getting it down the road, because I think it would be a conflict to vote on that, even though Mr. Dobbie said before it wouldn't be. You are getting benefits out of that vote eventually. Also, there's a thing hanging outside, thank you Larry for doing that. $32,000 for litigation, Employee Practices Group or something like that. Hopefully you guys can explain that a little further, it just says litigation. If you could let us know what that's for, maybe Mr. Boogert will during his time. Speaking about what George said about the hiring, you have a clerk three position out there for $12.74, a maintenance position which requires a lot of knowledge, $13.94. Sheriff's Office is about $15, now it's a disgrace. It's no wonder you have no money. Moving on, I read an article while I was away in Public Defender's Office. Spoke with one of the people in the article. We're considered one of the worst of the worst counties in the state for public defenders. They deserve better. You are innocent until proven guilty, and they should be able to be defended if that's what they need. So hopefully Larry could move on that. Tax claim, that office is in pure shambles. It looks like the aftermath of an earthquake. I had a lawyer in there that was, I guess was in there in the last two weeks. Showed me a picture of the office. Boots, you said help was on the way over a year ago. You roll your head and do whatever you want. Larry, Gary, I would implore you to take a walk with me into that office this afternoon, right up to the meeting, and take a look. This picture showed a mound of files like this on a desk. There's no wonder nothing's getting filed on time or properly. So I would like you two to go with me and tell me that this is how you guys would like this county to be run, because he's allowed it to run that way for two years. It's a disgrace. Eight hundred and fifty days the two people are suspended now without pay because of you and your retaliation. And you allow this to go on. Where's the Eckerd Siemens report at? Nobody. Larry, I would ask you, if we can have the Eckerd Siemens report made in public, because they don't want it public because of what's in it. I think the women deserve it, I think the county deserves it, and I think the taxpayers and the people that buy things at the tax claim like I do, we deserve the Eckerd Siemens report. Mr. Hess requested it multiple times and was denied. I think the Eckerd Siemens report should be released, and I think these two women should be put back on the agenda, to be brought back, and after we walk through there today, I think it's going to be an easy decision for you to do that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, let's move on with the agenda. We have a proclamation today.
Something wrong with this system, or something wrong.
Something's feeding back, it's too close to something.
Gary?
How's that?
Good.
Can I stop?
Yeah.
We have a proclamation, whereas in 2023, a total of 650,000 people were homeless in the United States, and whereas the Scoop County Mental Health Development Service and Drug and Alcohol Program, in conjunction with the Scoop County Children and Youth Services, Access and Management, Inc., County Offices of the Senior Services, Scoop County Action Service of All, Veterans Office, Police Departments of Scoop County, Church of Scoop County, and many providers of human services are directing a point-in-time count on January 24, 2024. And whereas, the purpose of the count is to be able to bring awareness and provide housing, human services, and referrals to individuals of families in need. And whereas, the goal of our county agencies and offices in this is to locate, bring assistance to, and work towards preventing homelessness in Scoop County. Whereas therefore, be resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, take this opportunity to endorse and work with the Scoop County Mental Health Development Services and Drug and Alcohol Programs, along with other county agencies involved, to complete the January 24, 2024 Point-in-Time Count to eradicate homelessness in our county. And this is adopted by the Commissioners on this day, the 17th of January. Do we need a motion, roll call? Roll call?
We need a motion.
Motion?
I'll make a motion and we do the proclamation for the homeless state count on...
January 24.
January 17.
17.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Thank you for all you do, and it's an important thing. When people have brought up, you know, mental health issues are an important issue for this county, we need to help people. So, thank you.
We usually have over 100 volunteers throughout the county, and does the different agencies. We do 17 different teams, a lot of site locations. We're doing a training today. The support of the Commissioners means a lot. In Scoop County, it's really lucky to have that many volunteers. A very cool nice squad trying to help.
This is the national count that goes across the United States on the same day. It's mandated by the federal government. And I will tell you that Scoop County has been one of the counties that really did come together as a community to get resources out to individuals who may need it. Our count per se against other counties may not look like it's high, but it's high for this county because we're a small county. And more importantly, I think it's not the people that are just keeping on the street, it's all the in-between people that we have, that are couch surfing, sleeping in their cars, going from place to place. This year specifically, we've had a lot more people in the supports from food banks, our, from Servants to All for Homeless Shelter, and gathering information and resources. So thank you for your support. Thanks very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah.
I'd like to reiterate right here about me this morning, this is not just one person or one group, it's a great number of organizations, of people. Mental Health Development Services, obviously Elaine, Drug and Alcohol, the Children and Youth people involved, Service Access Management, Senior Services, Community Action, Servants to All, Veterans Offices, Police Departments, and our County Church, and many, many other providers of human, so it's a, like Elaine says, a huge group effort. And I'm very proud that we've worked you folks through those difficulties.
I'm crossing my fingers for warm weather too, because next week, they go out into the lake and actually walk the rebel tracks, going the bridges to try and connect.
I know this is, you know, one count that you do at one single time of the year, but I know all the organizations that you just talked about, they're almost every day. We get some calls and some people that need assistance and send them to these different organizations, along with the United Way, which has the call-in number and so forth, that they can get the services right away. So those are some of the things that, not just in one day, but they're here every day. And as you can see, there's a collective organizations all throughout the county that definitely do help some people. So again, we thank you and everyone else that's involved in what you do every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Gilbert, the Mental Health Development Services?
Asking for approval to request to submit a DCCE fiscal year 2023 to our violent intervention and prevention VIP grant application in the amount of $43,000 to cover the cause of the crisis intervention training, which is called CIT. It's a 40-hour train-the-trainer program for 10 people for the county CIT program. This training, in the long run, is to work with our police officers, our first responders, even our correction officers, in regards to understanding mental health and how to work with individuals. And it's to connect them and divert them from jail. The overall intent is to divert them from jail and connect them with resources. The CIT program is based off the Memphis model, which has been developed the last 20 years. That was in response to an incident that occurred with police shooting and killing an individual with mental health about 20 years ago.
Thank you. Adult probation, CJ?
Adult probation office is asking for approval of a contract with Psychological Associates of Scoop County LLC to provide counseling services for a period of one year, beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 1st, 2024, as follows. Psychological assessments, $425, polygraph testing, $400, individual counseling, $100, group counseling, $40, courtroom and testimony, $200 per hour, as well as Act 235 testing, which is psychological testing for legal weapons for our officers.
Thank you. And our Children and Youth?
Morning Commissioners, Carl Brumwitz, Assistant Administrator, on behalf of Mrs. Stevens. Morning. We have three items, requesting approval of an agreement with Republican Harrow, Pottsville, Pennsylvania, determined January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, for digital advertising for local foster parent recruitment. Terms include a monthly cost of $1,450 and a total contract cap of $17,400. This agreement is an allowable activity under the Federal Family First Transition Act, requiring no local matching funds. This agreement does represent a renewal. We did have some minor adjustments to the ongoing recruitment campaign compared to last year. Actually brought the cost down a little bit compared to last year. Second item is approval of an agreement with Children's Choice Incorporated, headquartered in Belmar, New Jersey, with terms running on 2023 to June 30 of 2024, for foster care services with 30M rates as follows. Level one at $65.33, level two at $68.49, level three at $78.33, medical level one at $59.11, intensive foster care for children aged newborn through 12 at $135.98, and intensive foster care for children over age 13 at $145.98. Finally, we are requesting approval of an addendum to the agreement with the Vanco International Incorporated out of Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. That agreement is dated July 7, 2023. This addendum would incorporate an upgrade to that information system related to the AFCAR's reporting requirements. This has to do with that, that's required by the federal government, and condition of our participation in the same. The total project cost for that upgrade is $8,631.68.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl. Agriculture land preservation?
I'd like to welcome Kelsey, she's a new, how long have you been a listener, Kelsey?
I started in the end of October of last year, so still pretty new. Hi, Commissioner, good morning. My name is Kelsey Brown, I'm the Agriculture Program Coordinator for the School Conservation District. This morning, we are requesting to approve the certification of county funds for the 2024 program year in the amount of $256,589, $539.39 for the purchase of agriculture conservation easements. The amount represents the addition of the 2024 county match funds from the county revenues plus the total interest collected from the pre-agree rollback tax penalties. This program, I would say, I know we're working on several farms that are currently working to go to the state board for approval. At this current rate, we have three total farms, one of which is including these farms. So, working very diligently to work with the state on this. Obviously with the county funds, they support the land preservation on top of what the state laws is.
Roughly how much, you used to be guaranteed four-to-one match, because more counties are participating, it's not always that, but roughly?
Roughly that, yes.
So it's not just about three-to-one, right?
Yep, that's correct.
How many acres are preserved in our county right now?
Right now, we have over, I think it's 45,000 or 48,000, something like that. I know on our current waiting list, we have over 80 advocates that are still waiting to be preserved. And those participants can be on that list for several, several years. They go back to the early 2000s that they've been waiting to be on the reserve list.
Roughly, when it's all said and done, it's possible we preserve four or five farms possibly, or maybe?
Yes, typically, we look at anywhere from three to five farms a year, depending on the amount of funds that we have available.
Can you repeat how many farms you said? There was a sneeze up your line.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So total, right now, we have 115 farms that have been preserved in the county.
And how many do you say are being helped with this fund this year, or on, for this?
For this current year, so actually, it goes back two years. So for the 2022 year, we had three farms that were selected, and then for the 2023 year, there was also three. So there's a total of six that are currently. But you made a statement that there was a cough that was purposely done on the finding. There was three farms, including whose farm? Mr. Heatherington. You just sat there and said we weren't on it!
It was done a few years ago, Jeffrey.
It's just, come on.
Nothing to do with this.
You're so broken. You are so broken. And I would say for, for the purpose of Mr. Heatherington's farm, his farm is being preserved through 100% state funds.
So it's not a farm.
Not a single penny of county funds.
State.
States.
Yeah.
State federal.
State federal funds.
And how many on the waiting list?
There's 80 on the waiting list, that is right true.
About 80 on the waiting list.
Okay, let's.
Congrats, Boots.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we presume.
Oh, wait.
Never mind. Go ahead, Mr. Williams. I'll motion it.
I'll second it.
Oh?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Okay, let's just, okay. Tax claim?
Where's she at? You can't get out of my area of the court.
Grant writers? Oh, tax claim. Approval request for auto repository sales pursuant to 72PS 58600625, listed on the county website. Grant writers?
Today I have approval to award contract in the amount of $23,299.83 to AAA Services LLC for a CBG project for Pine Grove Township ADA Recreation Center. And then also approval to award contract in the amount of $67,090 to Tri- vet Contract and Company, Inc., for Pine Grove Township ADA Equipment Project at the Pine Grove Township Municipal Building.
Okay, thank you. Office of Senior Services?
Good morning, Dean Aron Ross, Senior Administrator. Approval for fee-for-service contract with Attorney Stanley Burke of Pottsville, paid for legal services. The rate will be $94.10 per hour, and the contract cap will be $21,250. I just need to add something that I neglected to put on here. The term of the contract is for January 12, 2024, to June 30, 2024.
Thank you. Human resources?
Looking for approval to extend the term of the contract with Flan Walton-Hindlock of Allentown for general legal advice and labor relations.
Thank you. Treger's office? Oh, okay. Good morning.
The account balances for the end of December of 2023 is $98,597,813.66.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance office?
Commissioners, good morning. The budget adjustments, as well as supplemental budget appropriation resolutions that are listed in the agenda today, all have been posted outside of the boardroom. In connection with the supplemental budget appropriation resolutions, number 2023-22 and 2024-03 are being presented on behalf of Grant Writers' Office. They pretty much represent the same thing. The first one for $3,009, the second one for $5,000. Additional interest was earned on funds. And what we want to do is appropriate, to adjust the appropriated accounts, so that interest can be distributed. In terms of supplemental budget appropriation resolution 2024-02 for $200,000, this is in connection with IAF easements. This resolution was presented at last week's meeting. There have been no changes made to the resolution. It's presented today for action.
Can I have a motion on resolution 223-22?
Second.
Just one question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Can I have a motion on 2024-03?
I'll make that motion.
Second. One question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Approval of 2024-02, can I have any motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. No question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Human resources?
Just due to major items today, Commissioners, of soil conservation, retirement of Patrick McKinney as the Environmental Education Coordinator, effective 1/31/24. In 911 Communications, the resignation of Abigail Horton, telecommun- telecommunicator level two, effective 1/26/24. In the prison, the resignation of Obika Williams as correction officer, effective 1/10/24. In the Public Defender's Office, the appointment of Kenneth Kopczynski as an unpaid intern, effective 1/22/24. In domestic relations, the resignation of Emirat Hamburger, Secretary One, effective 1/19/24. And in the District Attorney's Office, the appointment of Kathleen Riedlinger as guideline supervisor, effective 1/22/24.
Thank you.
If I can, I'd just like to thank Porcupine Pat, as he's well-known, has put a lot of time into the county, definitely educating a lot of kids on the environment and so forth, and sustainability, about that, you know, you need to take care of all our outdoors and surroundings. If you don't do that when you're young and throughout your age, you know, who's going to take care of it? One thing I'll tell you is that when we did the youth summit, a lot of times Pat would help us. We'd introduce Pat and said, does anybody, you know, know about the Conservation District or whatever? And they all would say, Porcupine Pat. And then I would say, Porcupine Pat. So again, he was a great spokesperson. And he's gonna stay on as part-time to help out the new person coming in. And I just want to wish him a lot of luck in the time that he's been in this county, definitely on conservation and resources and education to our youth. And sometimes now, it's almost thirty-five, thirty-eight years, I think, that he put into the county. So a lot of them are now, you know, not my age, but a little bit older. I'm well over that. But again, I want to thank you for your services.
I'd like to add that I was on the Conservation Board when that idea was brought to the board. Craig Morgan was our district manager. I was chairman. And there was some grant money available, but Craig was pushing to get a full-time educator on the board, on the staff. And part of it would be that he would be paid for what, he would charge his minimal fee to go to each of the schools and do a presentation. And it was risky. The board was a little bit concerned that if we did this, would it work out? And obviously, you know, Porcupine Pat hit the ground running, like Carrie said, every high school kid knew him. We were at Penn State one day and my kid said, Dad, Dad, who's that? I said, look, who's there? I thought it was maybe Coach Perino or... Well, no, that's Porcupine Pat. So my kids, it was a household name. Once again, he's, I was there and he was hired. Like I say, he did everything he promised to do and much, much more. And as a result, we have quite a few environmental, environmental teams in our county that not only have did one county wars, but have gone to state and national wars. So I can't say enough of the good things about how he's helped train our young people. So, which Pat was the best line. We talked, Commissioner actually called down to talk to Kelsey about a situation and he was, he was gonna stay on as the new one to help a new person get their feet wet and get going. So. And he's also still volunteers with Sweet Arrow Lake. He volunteers with the, I mean, you name it, something environmental wise, Porcupine Pat's up to his neck in. So, so thanks, many, many thanks to him and best of luck with his retirement.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Porcupine Pat for his service to all of everybody in Scoop County, not just one area. Because I remember being up in Tamakiwa in West Penn. Kind of remember him when I was a little bit younger. Because he's been there for pretty long, like since I'm in my twenties. So he's just been a tremendous asset to the county and he's always been a spokesperson for the environment. And whenever you needed him for anything, what I understand, he's always been involved. Like I said, helping up in Tamakiwa, helping in West Penn, townships, everywhere. He went everywhere in the county. He just didn't focus on one area. He was just, he was a part of Scoop County. So I really appreciate his service. Appreciate his service and I'm glad he's still staying on in some type of capacity to help. I don't think he'll, I don't think he'll retire fully. I still think he'll help because he enjoys it. That's one thing that's nice about him. The man enjoys what he does. So that's a good thing.
Now, round of applause for Pat, right?
Yep. Is there any new business?
I'll make a motion for your.